City Council Joint Meeting with Winchester School Board. Here, would you please call the roll for the city council?
Council Bill.
Here.
Council Pat.
Here.
Council Hercher. Council Vincent.
Here.
Council Flo.
Here.
Council Tegnisti.
Here.
Council V.
Here.
Council Wendell. And Council Sullivan.
Here.
And I'd like to call this January twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, School Board Joint Meeting with City Council. Now, I'm school board clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Burton.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Here.
Ms. Yaris. And Dr. Pierre Cheneval.
Here.
Mr. Rockwell.
Here.
Ms. Burrow. Here. Dr. Tyro.
Here.
Okay, next item on the agenda will be public comments. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to us? Eric Nolan?
Eric Nolan, is there anyone here who would like to address the school board tonight? I don't think nobody signed up for it.
Yeah.
All right, that closes the public comments section. That brings us to item three A on our agenda, future capital improvement projects. Mr. Smith, are you leading this or?
He's going to kick things off.
Okay.
Welcome, everybody. Tonight, we have a short presentation but full of a lot of details and specifically related to capital improvements for the Winchester Public Schools. For those of you who are new to city council, there's three different ways that we fund capital projects, right? One is through what's called our carryforward funds, which is residual funds left over after your annual budget. We typically come in at ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of our budget, so that one to two percent. We then take and use in our capital improvement plan. Then you have items that the city council pays for directly from, for lack of a better term, their savings account, right? Things that might be half a million to a million, two hundred, two million dollars. And then, of course, you have your bonds, which were sitting in a building that was primarily funded through a bond. So we're going to go over all of that with you tonight, the future plans of the schools, including the biggest project that's on the agenda tonight, which is a renovation of Garland Corals Elementary School. So, Mr. Smith, our director of operations, will take you through that, and I'll be chugging in here and there. Please feel free to stop us, ask questions. This is meant to be a conversation, right? So, you know, if you have a question, make sure you get it in there while we're on that slide. So with that, I'll leave it to Mr. Smith to take us away.
Okay, thank you. So, good evening. This is for, the first slide is just an introduction to what a capital improvement plan is. I know many of you have been on our boards before, but we do have several newly elected officials. And so, just real, a real quick introduction to what a capital improvement plan is. It's really our document that tries to tell a story about our facilities. It does summarize our existing facilities and their history. Talks about where, when they were built, when we renovated, what we've done to them. Talks a little, it also has information in there about the bond issuance. We know that the city has done a great job supporting our facilities, and we share that as part of our story. It also reflects the debt summary. So we want folks to know what the debt burden is that the city takes on for our facilities, and we let the public know what those expenditures are. Obviously, the biggest piece is enrollment projections. You want to see a school district that's flat or growing. You don't want to see a district that has a loss of students. And if you do, that would obviously impact these facilities. But we do provide enrollment projections, and as you, as you'll see in our document, once it's approved and posted, our enrollment projections are basically flat for the coming years. It does provide a picture of our current priorities for the Winchester Public Schools School Board, with an estimated cost and the timeline for those projects to get completed. Typically, we're at fifty thousand dollars or more to put it in the capital improvement plan. We do have a section that we maintain with some smaller expenditures, but for the most part, we're at fifty thousand and above. As Dr. Van Hugel mentioned, typically funded via our carryforward funds or via the city. Those are really the only two ways that we can provide funds for the pay. There is obviously the opportunity for the city to use it out of their general fund and pay-as-you-go, which is cash basis, basically. It also shows that we have a couple of projects that we like to set money aside that we know are coming due on an annual basis, or not on an annual basis, but on a decade-type basis. So, for instance, the football field, we typically set aside fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year into the fund so that we, whenever we get to that need, we have some money to cushion the blow of paying for that. We set aside that in the past, and we've used that money to replace the football field just recently in the last, I think it's maybe three, three years ago. And then we provide a description of each project, and we provide that. All this stuff, all this information goes to city council and to the city for their planning purposes, as well as for, especially for any planning on bonds and debts. So just a quick slide on some examples. That carryover on the left-hand side, as you can see, these are really kind of our typical expenditures that we have through our capital improvement plan on an annual basis. Playgrounds, I don't know if you know, but they are extremely expensive, up to a quarter million dollars for a playground these days at an elementary school. We are getting ready to replace the playground in the coming summer, hopefully, at Virginia Avenue. But playgrounds are expensive, and we use that money that we carry over to make sure that our playgrounds are safe and accessible to the kids. One of our biggest purchases out of that carryover is bus purchases. And so, we have a fleet of about fifty buses. If you replace three buses a year, it takes you in the neighborhood of eighteen to twenty years to replace all of your buses. So, once you buy a bus, you got to realize it's may not be replaced for another eighteen years because we're continuing that cycle over time. But three, three buses will now cost you upwards of a half a million dollars these days, especially with all the equipment packages that they have and offer for them. And then you can see some other things. We'll spend money on some landscaping. We have a lot of property that we take care of. We've got security cameras. We have a ton of cameras in all of our schools, and they always require maintenance and upgrades. The technology dies off, we could buy stuff to replace it. Much like what you're going to see in our equipment packages at Corals, things do, obviously, need to be replaced over time. Also, roof work, again, another major component of our buildings that is very expensive to maintain. And all of our schools get a little bit of roof work every year, every other year. We spend money on that. And then finally, athletic upgrades. You can see a significant amount of money in the last, it's like, six years that we've shown you there. Replacing the turf field at Hanley, all of this is Hanley except for the Danny Morgan Football Field we put in. We put in a football field, replaced all of our tennis courts, which is used not only by the students but by the citizens of Winchester. And then the track replacement, that was paid not only out of carryover but also we received some very generous donations from Hanley alumni and community members. So, we do use that carryforward in a lot of different ways, and it's imperative that we keep it and maintain it. It's a wonderful opportunity for us to manage and take care of stuff without coming to city council for every project that we need. The other two you can see is either the fund balance, as we talked about, pay-as-you-go, cash basis, and then bond issuance for the bigger projects. Some of the things, the city, for whenever we designed this building, we went through the, we went through a conceptual study and designed for this building. The city gave us half a million dollars out of their fund balance that particular year. And we used that to pay for the design and conceptual study for this building here. And in the future, you can see, we've got three projects that are in our capital improvement plan that we hope to acquire or work on moving forward. One is practice fields. You know, as, as an outcome of the discussion about lights at Hanley, there was a realization that our sports teams are lacking the fields that they need to complete their practices, or they compete with each other for practice space. And so, we think that there's some opportunity there for practice fields in the future. Patsy Cline is the only section of Hanley that was not renovated in the two thousand ten renovation, which is now fifteen years. Patsy Cline furniture and carpet is from nineteen seventy-two. And so, it is now fifty years old, those chairs. And if you've sat in those in a concert there, you might realize that they're from seventy-two. But the carpet there needs to be replaced, and all the seating needs to be replaced too. And upgrading thirteen hundred and eighty seats is no small endeavor. And finally, we would, obviously, as part of the Corals Elementary renovation, we would like to study that school and the land that it's attached to to understand what the best ways we could upgrade or rebuild that school. There are some issues with how it's placed right now that maybe in the nineteen, early nineties, whenever it was designed, weren't apparent. But for one, the chiller unit is actually sits inside of a hole next to, and some of you may have seen this already, but the chiller sits inside of a hole next to the building. We're going to show you a photograph of that. That needs to get out of that hole, needs to get fresh air into it, it needs to come out of that. The other thing is, is parking is super limited. We disrupted our neighbors, we'd like to be good neighbors, but we disrupt those families that live around us with teacher parking. Our bus loop is sidewalk on a city street, and we like to, we prefer to use a bus loop that is internal to the land, and that's something that we would need to study as well. And so, there are a number of things that we would want to look at, and that is why we request money from city council to take care of that feasibility study, to better understand how we might replace that school in the future because we are at the point where it doesn't need to be upgraded, renovated, or replaced. And finally, bonds. You can see some of the bond issuance money that you guys have approved in the past that share, that we spent on Hanley, the Shahada Center, the Douglas School, the future is on course. And of course, obviously, John Kerr. Now, we do show that, we understand that the city, you know, has policy around how much money they borrow and understand that there's, you're always looking for that opportunity. Where can we borrow more, where can we not borrow more? And so, we understand that, that there is a payment schedule, and we understand when that, when those numbers will decrease and hopefully provides some relief in the debt, debt scores. Any questions about how we fund things? Okay? So, on the next slide, we're going to talk about, these are the two buildings. Our schools are in good shape, folks. We, I'm not here to tell you that any of Winchester Public Schools are in good shape. There are a couple of schools that need work, and Garland Corals is at the top of that list. That building was built in nineteen fifty-five. It is now a seventy-year-old building. The front portion of that was renovated in the nineties. They upgraded the mechanical equipment. That mechanical equipment is now thirty years old. It's at the end of its useful life, and it is in need of overhaul, both interior and exterior. The nineteen ninety section that was added to that building is in location. And we, we would like to provide that section, an upgrade to its HVAC system and its lighting systems. But the nineteen fifty-five, again, as part of that conceptual study, we'd like to understand what's the best way to handle that, whether it's a tear down and rebuild, whether it's a tear down of all of it and a rebuild, whether it's making it taller and going up and adding floors. But we're going to go through a little bit of options. Virginia Avenue is at the end of its life and the mechanical system and the lighting is very close. It's in that thirty years as well. So, in the nineties, all three elementary schools, or three of the four elementary schools were built. Frederick Douglass, Corals, and Virginia Avenue were all built within an eight-year period or so. Virginia Avenue, the exterior is in good shape. The envelope of that school is in good shape, but the mechanical is definitely at the end. Now, one, one piece, we did use COVID money. We brought in some engineers, and they said we could use the internal systems that you have here. We'll replace the chiller and we'll get that upgraded. So there is a new chiller on that building that we would, we put it in place so that whenever we do finally get to the point where we get in and change out the ductwork and all the fans and pumps and stuff that are in that system, we can still use that chiller. So we have planned ahead for that, but we do still need to replace that HVAC system. But we did put about four hundred thousand dollars into that building this year with a new chiller with the COVID dollars that we received in Philadelphia. So next, I'm just going to show you a couple of pictures. That's that chiller that I told you about that sits in a hole. It does sit next to, I think it's Van Fossen Street right there. It's, it's on the side of the building. It really needs to be raised up, it needs to get fresh air. It needs to, it needs to stop heating itself. We, we would, obviously, what we think that it would be, if we were told, just fix HVAC, we would need to consider little site work because we would want this lifted up and out of the hole that it's in. Obviously, it was there, it was hidden. That's what, that's what everybody wants to do. They want to hide their mechanical systems. And so, when you do that, sometimes you put them in precarious situations, and you decrease the life or you cause them to work harder, not smarter. And then, you can see the picture of the ductwork there. That ductwork is, again, from the, from the nineties, and we re-coated as best we can, but it's still from the part. This is ductwork that carries the warmer cold air into the building, but it's got to pass through the exterior first. And so, this kind of stuff needs to stay up to speed, and so we do, we patch it and we take care of it as best we can, but it's still, it's thirty years old. On the next slide, this is some of the interior. We do have some asbestos in that building. It is secured and safe, the building is safe, but it's still in there and it's marked. And then our basement floods on a regular basis. The running joke, as we call it, Lake Corals, right? Anytime we get a heavy downpour, rain, I don't know if you can see it in that first picture there yet. You can see the walls discolored at the top, there's water gets behind that. For us to go in and tear it out, just not a very good value for the money that we've been to do that right now. But as part of the renovation, obviously, it would be something if you want. And then finally, some pictures just from the interior. The building does have a set of stairs that does not have a lift attached to, I mean, it does have a lift now. We put in a lift, you can see it there on the side of the wall, but, but that stairwell is limited. We have to put somebody on a platform to lift them up and down. And so, whenever we have a student that's in that hallway, for instance, we recently had a student with a broken leg that needed assistance, they do have to sit on that. But again, very limited ADA. And then to get outside from that, you actually have to come up the lift because there's another set of stairs in that hallway that takes you out to the playground. So for a student that needs help, they actually have to come up the stairs, go all the way down the hallway, go out the front door, and go around. So, again, just some limited stuff. You can see the nineteen fifties hallway and the library as well. Just needs some work and be brought up to twenty twenty-five standards. So, a little bit about these options that I'm presenting. One, I'll tell you that these were calculated, these numbers were calculated using Loudoun County builds and renovate schools every year, multiple schools. So I talked to them and worked with their construction manager, and these were, these were based on twenty twenty-four square footage rates with a small two to three percent incremental increase for inflation. Whether or not that holds true in the construction industry, I don't know whenever we finally do get to the point. So take these numbers with a grain of salt, but just understand they are a starting point, but we've got to start somewhere, right? And so, to upgrade that lighting and HVAC at both of those schools, we're in the neighborhood of about eighteen million. I can tell you Frederick Douglass, that we just finished with the COVID money, cost us just shy of seven million. So we're at about, we're probably at about nine million if that gets decided in the next couple of years. The project with, where we were just to do Virginia Avenue, HVAC and lighting, and then do Corals Elementary School, upgrade their HVAC lighting, and then renovate the sixty percent of the current building, the nineteen fifty-five section, go in and completely renovate that. We're looking at probably in the neighborhood of about eighteen million. So we're looking at about thirty-six million for those three projects total. And then finally, another option would be for us to do the nine million of Virginia Avenue to get the HVAC and lighting at this speed. And then at Corals, spend nine million on the HVAC for the entire, and lighting for the entire building, renovate fifty-five section, and spend four million dollars on the new construction of ten additional classrooms at that school. Now, you might want to ask, why is that bullet, option three there? And we'll explain that the next slide.
Any questions with us?
Wait, can I say?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Four million kind of classrooms seems low.
It was based on the numbers that I got from, from Loudoun County for an elementary school that they, they did it in addition to. So I have a square footage number, and I don't have anything in front of me, I should never lie, but.
And would that assume that the bus classroom parking expansion is in the other number?
So.
The relocation of the bus loop there and the parking?
No, that's not included in any of this stuff. And this is just based on, again, some square footage numbers that are, this is a starting point. Square footage numbers I got from Loudoun, they did not, they did not go in and do the exact stuff that we would want to do. So this is really, honestly, that's why I said, this is, take this with a grain of salt. This is just starting numbers. And part of that conceptual study will be to form a budget based on current pricing and stuff that we're doing today.
Yeah, I want to reiterate that point. The request for half a million dollars to do the feasibility study would answer a lot of these questions in a lot more detail, with a lot more authority than, you know, what we're doing right now. And that, regardless, that's the first step in any project.
Question?
Go ahead.
Thank you. When you're doing the feasibility study, will you also be looking at what would be the cost for just starting over? Rather than piecemeal this, 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 and this?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, that's, I think it might be a little next slide. Actually, it may not be, but, okay, yeah. Obviously, you know, we would ask, what is it to completely demo and completely rebuild new? We would, to find out what that cost would be. Sometimes your renovation costs can be pushed up into that new building cost, but then you're on demo. And you have some demo whenever you're renovating, but you don't have to completely demo. Plus, that lot, that lot has city utilities around it, so it's something that we would have to work around as well. So there's some expenses there that we'll need to take into consideration as we're doing the conception study. But a tear down and a completely build is something definitely.
And you remember with this facility here, at one point, we were trying to renovate both the building we're sitting in now along with the nineteen fifties, the sixties version. And at some point, it came, became cost prohibitive and just as easy to tear down and build brand new. And that's what we ended up doing because of, it was actually cheaper to do so, so.
One other question. Do you know, are there any state monies for new schools, like if you did come up with that?
There's some bonds, I think, bonds.
Yeah.
There's some bonds you can get through the state, but we don't borrow those. That would be, it's still, it would still be borrowing. It's, I don't know if there's any grants.
Yeah, the only other thing I know of is last year during the General Assembly, there was a proposal to allow localities, I believe, a one percent sales tax that was going directly to school construction. That was not, that did not pass. But I don't know if that's up for debate or not, enrichment, still.
No, that's good, I was acknowledging her. Oh, okay, thank you. All right, yeah. So, so preferred choices number three, right? So that means upgrading, upgrading the HVAC and lighting in Virginia Avenue and taking care of Corals in some form or fashion, but at least getting that HVAC lighting done, the renovating and the fifty-five section, and then adding the ten classrooms. Now, why would we add ten classrooms? This would provide us with the opportunity to move the fifth graders back to the elementary school. It is, it's our instructional teams believe that they're better off at an elementary school. And we would move, we would rezone our elementary schools. We would add ten classrooms, bring those fifth graders down, this first been throughout the city, and move those fifth graders down. And then we would take Danny Morgan Intermediate School and close it, turn the campus into a middle school. Now, we would free up some space at that building, and so how would we use that space? We'd use it for alternative education programs. There's several programs that are in these.
Yeah, just to add to that, so I've yet to meet a family in Winchester that's really excited about their ten-year-old going to the middle school campus. So that's been a consistent theme over my time here at Family. So I really don't like my nine or ten-year-old at fourth grade gearing up to go be a middle schooler. I personally, as even as a dad, have had the belief, try to keep my kid as young as possible, as long as possible, those kind of mentalities. And truthfully, in probably your own experience, most elementary schools go through fifth grade. That's a typical grade configuration for an elementary school. So, and historically, what I, what I understand is when, when we did move the fifth grade up to that campus, that was never a long-term solution or the intention that we have a fifth, have fifth through eighth graders on that campus. So, from a, from a age-appropriate point of view, from a family point of view, from a kid point of view, it would be the preferred method to have our fifth graders at their, their home elementary school. You would have some operational savings by closing the school. You know, teachers would follow the kids, of course, but you have administrative costs and things like that that would, I don't have, we don't have a dollar figure on that yet. But that would be our preferred option, which, you know, if you go back up to here, of course, is the most expensive option. But those are the three, three things we have on the table. And I, just to drive from the point, option one is, we must replace HVAC in the next two to five years. That, that is, that is a must. In fact, you know, when I talked to Ed and the guys working on the systems, you know, Corals in particular, I just get the sense that it's held together with duct tape, right? And so, they don't even make the parts anymore for replacement. We have to hand do, or not hand do, but we have to contract with somebody to make those specifically for the system. And so, you know, that's one in particular that makes me nervous of, at any given day, what are we looking at? When do we have a situation where we can't open school for air conditioning doesn't work or heating doesn't work at Corals Elementary School? So, kind of the logic behind it is, if we're already in there doing nine, ten million dollar project, we should take the opportunity to also do other things that we need to do and try to maximize the effectiveness of our dollar share, so.
Yeah, I think under option one, you're, you're wasting money if you go and just do the HVAC and lane because that nineteen fifty-five building with the, with the dampness in the, in the basement, it's just not going to last. It's, like I said, it's seven, it's literally seventy years old. And so, it is, I believe it's something that we would need to replace that section at a minimum. And then, as Jason mentioned, we do contract, we have, we have a part that normally costs in the neighborhood of two to three thousand dollars that we now have to get manufactured and it costs us fifteen thousand. Okay, so about times the amount that it should cost to replace a part. This, the, every piece of equipment, I talked to my systems engineer today before this thing, and I said, he said, Ed, every system in that building, the manufacturers are no longer in business. He said, everything we have to do for that building, we have to get specially made by another company. And so, it's, by, by just replacing those systems, you're going to replace those systems, but you got to make them work in a nineteen fifty-five building. And so, that's where your, that's where your challenge really comes.
And sometimes to save money in the long run, it requires us to spend a little bit more upfront. To put a little context on all this, the Shahada Center that opened some years ago had in its original plan this geothermal heating that would have, by this point now, we would be saving the taxpayers of Winchester City so much money in the heating and cooling of that building. But it was the first thing to go, it was on the chopping block, and we were trying to find a dollar amount that, that we could all live with. So it's something to keep in mind. Sometimes to save the taxpayers money in the long run, you got to spend a little bit more upfront. That was a hard lesson for us to learn with the Shahada Center.
If I could, could you kind of remind all of us the, the decision matrix for the fifth grade? Like when that was done, why it was done, how long it was intended to be? And, and then I'd like to talk a little bit about the potential impacts on capacities on grade homes.
That was Mark.
Has anybody had any?
I believe, I was a teacher at the time. And I don't remember all the, I was not privy to all the discussions, so it was a, it was a different part. They did redraw the lines. I remember that that was to build some equity in socioeconomic levels. Did you the lines parallel this time?
When I, when I started here, whenever we started John Kerr, that was the first project. When I'm down here, that was the first project. We re-zoned that time because, well, because John Kerr had moved locations, and it's going to be a much bigger school again. So we did that, but fifth grade has always been there for months. Does anybody else that has a history here happen in the area?
I think it was, fifth grade was in the area.
That building was renovated, so Danny Morgan. That building was renovated, so Daniel Morgan was renovated also in the early 90s.
No, but there was a further addition made where the eighth grade, the seventh and the eighth grade.
Right, right.
We can get you the specifics. I know that's before our time, but it's likely, you know, on the right-hand side of Daniel Morgan, you have that double stack seventh and eighth grade. That's the newest part of Daniel Morgan. Most likely, when they added that section, is when they had the capacity to bring a whole grade level up from fifth grade. And it was most likely also the other schools, because that's before the new John Kerr were busting at the scene. Because, you know, at one point, this is highly reliable hearsay, Frederick Douglass, who currently has about 300 kids, was pushing 500, 600 kids, trailers everywhere before you built the new John Kerr that was able to house everybody. So most likely, you had burgeoning, you had burgeoning elementary schools. Remember, the old John Kerr was really tiny. And then you built the seven, eighth grade wing at Daniel Morgan Campus. That gave you capacity to put the fifth grade up and kind of decrease your elementaries for a little while. But remember, we were also growing during all those times. Just look at the historical enrollments continues to grow. And then you get the new John Kerr that just kind of gives back capacity to those elementary schools, likely the story.
Another consideration is that you want to keep your transitions to a minimum when you're taking children through the development process. So they're now going through K4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and then high school. So they have four transitions.
Mike? No, I'll say one thing. Like I have a 4th grader and I have a 7th grader. And there's a big difference there, right? The fifth grader goes to the Daniel Morgan, and that's a difference. There's a lot of difference between 10 and 13. And I think getting the kids back into a traditional K through 5 situation is huge for us if we can do that. And also, I know what it takes to do this because we have option three, you're in the board, right? But let's look to our neighbors and see what they are stuck with or can can down the road many years. And they didn't do it. And now they're in a bind, right? So we have a chance right now, I think, to make this right and kind of stabilize not just education, but buildings.
I think logistically also, from a logistics standpoint, it's a small thing, but it's not a small thing. You know, my kids are in high school and they went through the Daniel Morgan campus. You know, it becomes pretty difficult actually to pick up a child when you have a school that was kind of split in half, you know? And it can, it could take quite literally as much as 15 to 20 minutes, you know, to pick up my kid from. You know, so I think, you know, not, you know, development and all that, I think it's important.
And to everyone, Dr. Nigodun's comment about families not really loving the way it's set up now, I think that a transition to bring that to elementary school would be an attractive option, particularly for those people who are looking to move here. I mean, if you have a strong school system, a school system that makes sense, that's going to attract working families to the city of Winchester and those working families pay their taxes. And so if we're concerned about finding additional revenue streams in the future, you know, attracting families who actually pay their taxes and their kids are in schools, that's a good thing for the city of Winchester. So I think it makes a lot of sense when that throws a lot.
Can I find a certain loss? Because you actually made me think of when I was moving to Winchester two years ago. And that is one of the things I looked at is Winchester Public Schools. I was on the webpage as a parent that's involved in my kids' lives very much, and I'm very concerned about their education. Seeing that my fifth grader was going to be in a separate school was a little bit concerning for me. You know, ultimately, we heard good things about Winchester Public Schools, so we made the decision. But it does, you know, having that transition, I've seen, I have a fifth grader right now there. She does get excited because apparently the middle schoolers have a lot of excitement. Every bit of a loving year old girl, but having her stay as young as possible is so important as parents. So I fully agree with that.
So if I may, look at the options one, two, and three. I agree with Mr. Schmidt that option one is probably the least, the worst option in terms of ROI. Then we kind of get it obviously to the other two, but it seems to me like what I'm doing in my mind is I'm separating Quarles from Virginia Avenue, or from, yeah, Virginia Avenue. And so we have like two separate projects that we need to consider. The options kind of have an intermingle, which I don't think that's really good ROI. I would rather approach it as two separate scenarios. I guess my actual question is, they couldn't be done, they couldn't be done at the same time. You'd have to.
Man, that's, that's the thing. It's got me shaking in my boots. I have no idea what it means. And you're right, but doing it both at the same time would be an absolute nightmare.
Yeah, so, and that's, so logistically, if that's.
Yeah, that's the right word, but.
How, I mean, how do you, let's say you had, which one are you going to be afraid of first?
So right off the bat, my initial thought to that is I would do Quarles.
Do Quarles?
Yes. If I talked to my systems engineer, I think he would agree with me, and I can confirm that. But he feels comfortable with that chiller replacement that we did with COVID money at Quarles. I mean, sorry, Magnus, thank you. Yeah, the chiller replacement in Virginia Avenue gives us some breathing room. Okay, the boilers are, they are 30 years old, but they're in good shape. They have passed inspection. You know, at Quarles, we had, we lost a boiler to inspection. You get your boilers inspected annually and it failed. And so we couldn't, we couldn't use it. We had to replace it. That was a quarter of a million dollars. But, but I think that Virginia Avenue has some breathing room and we would probably do that.
But Ed, do we get a discount or?
These are only packaged together, just so you're aware. We only package them together because of the bond issues. That's what we were thinking. We'd just like to do one packet, one big bond issuance and that kind of thing.
And so, not to speak for our staff, but she's pretty creative, so. You got to give her a scenario. It's like, I might be able to do that. Why sure? It just seems to me that it's a simpler ask to look at it separately.
I got you. Yeah, I'm okay with that too. Yeah, for sure.
But to your point about search, as referring to a search space, when we do the Quarles project, whenever we do it, the feasibility study is important because it's going to tell us, if we get in there and remodel, we're going to have to have an elaborate trailers and things like that for kids to be in. So we got to take care of the kids while we're doing the project, and that requires some really, a lot of forethought.
When those buildings were built, whenever back in Virginia Avenue, man, Quarles could remodel and build, they put the kids here? So in fact, there's several people that'll tell you, they went to elementary school here.
And just to play devil's advocate, I think this is a situation in which quite literally, time has money. And the longer you defer projects, whether that be a year, two, five years, the numbers that we're looking at now as a starting point, that could easily increase, maybe even double by the time they circle back to it, which alluding to some of our neighbors have found that out recently. If they had paid X amount of money so many years ago, then they wouldn't have this exorbitant amount that they're being faced with now. So sometimes expediency saves money as well, is I guess what I'm trying to say.
Ed, you had the feasibility study, I think earlier, what was it, a half a million? What exactly will that get us? Will it say, you know, these are the projects you need to do? Break these down in the steps in what order? And how long would that take to get that? Then we would have to take that and then go get engineering and architect plans done? I'm trying to look at a timeline on all this before we even pull trigger on any of these projects. So in my head, my timeline is, if you approve the half a million dollars for me to get a firm in here, an architect, engineering firm in here, to take a look at things. If you approve that for next fiscal year, then I can put it out to bid and be starting to work on that conceptual plan in the fall. And I think it would probably take in the neighborhood of six to eight months to wrap that up and bring it back to the board, both the board and the city council, probably in the, put that out to bid. And once we get those bids back, probably, and you're looking at the fall, winter of '26. And then construction could start in the early '27 and be wrapped up by mid '28, my guess.
That's going to be retired by then.
What's that?
Be retired by then.
And through that process, the feasibility study will answer the question of, you know, is it just easier to tear the whole thing down and start over, right? Kathy's question. So they would answer that question for us.
Well, not only that, but we need some conceptual designs around, again, getting that bus loop if we can. If we can't, forget it. But if we can, can we reconfigure the campus where we can get that parking to get the bus loop and to get the playgrounds into a place that we're all happy with, that we feel are safe and are good for the schools and the kids to get.
And just, it's vast, Quarles is vastly different than it was when I went there. It was, the buses entered from, it was technically the back of school, and they went down to, as you said, a pit. And so they were not on the Sid Street. Yeah. I'd have to look. But the whole back of the.
Well, that one didn't exist probably, because that's the 97 edition.
You get it right. When that was, when that was not there, it was.
It was where the buses went?
It was like whole ground. I mean, you went downhill, you know, and went into school and all. You know, you could line, almost like Daniel Morgan originally was. And you could line five or six buses up, which was enough to get.
Our goal is to keep buses and the parent drop-off cars, that kind of thing, separate.
Yeah.
Right now, again, like I said, almost all of our staff park on the streets and around that school. And I get calls from residents saying, hey, this person, your bumper's blocking me. I can't even get out.
Oh, yeah, we get, I'm getting some emails.
Yeah, yeah. So we work on that. We try to take care of that. But we try to keep this separate, but we also prefer not to have our buses on the street that a kid can run between them and be in the middle of the street when they, if they pop out from the buses. If they pop out, hopefully, they're still in a parking lot where all the buses are sitting and there's not traffic. So we try, we try to work with that. If I could just circle this back to the historical context, I think it would be helpful to get that data from those who might know the when, the why, the where, and the how long. It was definitely before my time. And I recall my tenure on the school board when we were looking at the new John Kerr school, that that really amplified and created the capacity at our K through 4 level where we were not looking at issues with enrollment projections. Granted, at that time, there was pretty steady enrollment projections that, you know, for COVID and other changing demographics as wind. But then with the Shahada Innovation Center, that created kind of built-in capacity for our ninth and 12th. And so that the concern was, at some point, you're going to bump into capacity issues at the Daniel Morgan campus. And so there was always thought that the solution there might be to pull the fifth graders back, or you're going to be doing a major addition and renovation at Daniel Morgan. So it's, I don't know, maybe now, maybe later. I do think from a developmental standpoint and from keeping our kids as young as we can, for as long as we can, pulling the fifth graders back has always made sense. So, yeah, I think, you know, we're looking here at a capital plan. And I know that the feasibility study is still considered capital in nature, but that's something that's kind of in front of us for action sooner rather than later. This is just to start planning it in our funding capacities and our retirement debt.
Yeah, that will be part of our budget request in March. In addition to our typical operating, it will be that half a million. That would be our number one priority for a pay-go or funding directly from city council one time. To get that going, sooner the better on our side. That's where the time, the clock starts, as soon as we have that initial investment to get the project moving.
And then, just to my own piece of mind, that Virginia Avenue, there's no way to split off HVAC and then do lighting because you're, which I could get to get to the HVAC, you know, it's all good lighting.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. You've got, you've got to get up in the ceiling. You've got to take down the ceiling grids. It's the perfect time to do lighting. And if you did, that's what we did. So in fact, in that carryover column that I showed you earlier, I could have put in there, we spent another $600,000 on lighting and sprinkler systems at Frederick Douglass whenever we replaced that HVAC, because there was no way we were going to give up that. Right? As soon as we do, we're going to be taking down all the ceiling grids and stuff. It was time to upgrade the lighting and the sprinkler grids as well.
Is there any more discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
The chiller that you said that's at Quarles Elementary School, did you say that that's been there since 1997 and it's never been used?
The what?
The chiller. The chiller.
No, 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 it's been used. The chiller's used to do the air conditioning.
That's right here?
Yeah, that's been there since 1997.
I would put it in there. Yeah, but it sits down off the road. Like the road's running right beside it there. And it sits down inside a hole and just constantly overheats and gets, you get up, it heats itself. Yeah, it's been used for sure.
Any other comments or questions? If not, then we'll move forward on the agenda, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sullivan for Agenda Item 3B or 3.2 on the council's page.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item on the agenda is, well, my agenda is 3.2 Discussion on 2025 Budget Priorities and Revenue Updates.
Okay, I'll start this one off. This is a few slides. The purpose of this item is really for the school board and the city council to have a dialogue about their priorities coming into this year, for a little bit about what the school's priorities are in terms of the CIP. I'll start off just walking through so that everyone's on the same page with our budget calendar. And this actually is going to be updated. Oh, actually, it's already, no, it's going to be updated. There's, initially, when we put this together in December, it was not with a lot of WPS. So in order to line up with their budget meetings and approvals, Winchester Public Schools budget presentation will actually be March 25. Now, that is also when your deadline to adopt the not-to-exceed rate is. Almost certainly going to have questions about the school's request for the budget. So superintendent indicated, of course, he'll be available to answer any questions you might have on March 11, as we start working through, you know, our budget options as well. So I coordinate with the superintendent regularly, probably almost on a daily basis, on a variety of topics, especially when it's budget season or snowing, and this is both of those. So we'll be in constant communication as updates to the budget come along, because they are going through the same process we are. So we are currently very early in our budget process. I'm not even, I have not completed all of the budget meetings for, for city departments, the internal budget meetings. Those should be ready next week or two. Then we will start discussing department budgets with the various committees of city council in February with an eye towards having full council discussions by March 11. And then you see the order of proceedings after that, much of which are determined by state code. The next slide is just a kind of a reminder as to where we're at from our tax rates across. So it's, when I say select, these are the independent cities that are comparable to Winchester. We are currently in pretty good shape relative to our peers on the rate, which is currently 83 cents. We were, until last year, the lowest. Fredericksburg is, they just had their reassessment last year. So they just adjusted from their old rate down to a rate. We will go through that exercise as well, council determining where we land between 83 cents and what our, and what our revenue neutral rate is. And so, but compared to our peers, we are, we're in pretty good shape. Meals Tax, we're right dead center. Meals tax, we're right dead center, and that's pretty much in line with the state median. And then our motel tax, we are a little bit higher than our, where this was raised two years ago by council. We are a little higher than the median on that one. So that's where we stand in terms of the county's capacity to adjust the rates. Whereas we're talking about a $40 million debt issuance is roughly $3 million a year in debt service. So it's not as if we borrow $40 million and then we just pay it off at some point. There's an annual $3 million payment that's associated with that. And that is six cents. What are we paying now on the debt service? Mary, what do we, total, just for schools projects or city? Because all of yours is kind of mixed in. I think currently, school debt service is...
Total is 12.9.
Total 12.9 in terms of debt. Yeah, right now, the school's at 12.9, so...
That's city and school.
City and school debt. This would be the largest, 40 million would be the largest project since Hanley. So it is a, not our normal project, right? Normally, we're talking, you know...
I guess that's my question.
Yeah.
Like, what's the difference between what we're paying now versus what we're paying now?
Pretty significant.
Okay.
Now, the good news is that Hanley debt's starting to drop off. So 2027, the Hanley debt is done. So this is a good time to talk about that. But, you know, adding $40 million brings us back up to close to our policy limit. Policy limit is something council sets, but it's also something our ratings agencies look at and can be stated in that policy. So we view it kind of like our credit card limit, if you want to put it in those terms. We could always probably go get more credit, but our credit score is going to drop. So 40 million is about $3 million debt service in that. Every penny on the tax rate is about $489,000. So rounding it up to 500 gets you to about six pennies of the tax rate. Just something to keep in mind. So this is where we're currently at, but we're in pretty good shape. And then, of course, this being the assessment here, we will have, council will have the ability to determine what a new rate would be, potentially a level of that. Let's get on one slide. Council, here's a couple of quick updates in terms of where we're at, based on revenue. Like I said, this is a reassessment here. We're looking at about a 13.5% increase in our assessments. We don't have final numbers yet, but we're getting pretty darn close. We do have an estimated non-audited revenue neutral rate of 73 cents. Again, that could move a little bit, but right now, our calculations are at 73 cents. As you saw on the previous slide, we're at 83 cents. So the difference between revenue neutral and our current rate is about 82 cents. For those of you who are new to this complicated mess, because this revenue neutral and all these terms are, they're not the kind of terms that you run into in your day-to-day personal finances. A revenue neutral rate would be a rate that assumes we get no additional property tax revenue from existing properties. Our organic growth, that is revenue that comes from new developments and other potential, other revenue sources that are growing independently of the property tax rate. So pretty good number in terms of organic growth this year. 1.7 million, a little over 1.7 million. I always view organic growth as revenue that you, you know, that's when you maybe add employees. That's tied to growth of the city, meaning growth of services, increased demand for services. That's what organic growth is tied to. Assess value on current properties, that's typically something you've got to think about. Inflation, how does a city absorb inflation? We had about 3% inflation last year, so that's a number that I'll be bringing up regularly with council. And we'll be looking at is what would be a fair growth in terms of our budget. Of course, there's some uncertainty around the feds. You do not, you know, we get a fair amount of money from the feds. It's not, it's not our largest revenue stream by any stretch. It's a relatively small, but yet important revenue stream. And I think it's even more important for the school systems. I think you guys get a greater percentage from the feds than the city gets from the feds. So until we know how the federal branch is going to operate, there's some uncertainty there. Infrastructure for us is also weighs heavily. As everyone knows, we are, currently, it's out to bid for our new fire station. That should be somewhere, that would also be a fairly significant project. And then, probably not too far down the road, in the next five to seven years, another fire station may be in order because we have two fire stations. One is very, very old, you know, a store building. And then there's the one that we're in the process of tearing down because it is out of date. So I hope that the, you know, the construction cost won't increase significantly, but it is something that we have to take into consideration. We are an old city. I like to think of it as a house in a lot of ways. Older houses are maintenance homes. And we have an old house here. We've kept up on a lot of things. Hanley's beautiful. Like Ed and Jason were saying, schools are in pretty good shape. City Hall just got renovated. Somebody's done a good job keeping up. But there's still a lot of things to fix in this old house. On a positive note, our, this status is very, very solid. And we just got our bond rating reaffirmed. We had the highest, you know, the highest available in some cases. And high margin rate, we can see, we have solid reserves, so we're able to do a lot of things for the residents because of that strong financial status. So that's what we're looking at. That's what council is going to be looking at coming into this budget cycle. Again, there will be some resources to work with, but we're still early in the process. So now is a good time for council and the school board to be thinking about what those priorities are and have a dialogue about those priorities. Because once we start getting into the process, Jason's going to be hearing his school board to refine what their priorities are, although you heard a pretty big ticket priority tonight, of course. And I'm sure I'll be hearing the same thing from the city council about their priorities are in terms of rate setting and city investments. I will say that we, you know, in terms of our priorities, my priorities as we're starting this budget process, I know we're going to be making, we're proposing some significant investments in public safety, particularly in the fire departments and the police department, really in the staff front, in order to keep up. And then there will be some other, some other things that we, of course, have to increase, whether it be our health insurance. I know Jason's anticipating a health insurance increase as well. And of course, all the mandatory things. We don't control fuel costs. And, you know, some maintenance contracts, of course, will come to... There's going to be a lot of other smaller things that council has to prioritize. But this is the year to do it because it is an assessment year. I believe that's all I wanted to throw out there, is points for discussion involved. I'll turn it over to the school board and council for whatever your discussion, however you want to take the discussion.
Mr. Bell? Yeah, I mean, this is, this is all very good and useful information. You know, when you look at these graphs, like, wow, why is Manassas so low on the meals tax? Why can't we be more about Manassas? Blue their property tax, it's a buck 26. So, you know, everybody's got expenses to run a community. It's how you divvy it up and where you distribute your risk, you know? You don't want to be fully loaded on one tax revenue structure versus another. When I first came on council, I went to the Virginia Municipal League training for new council members. And there were people from communities that, yeah, we used to front-load everything onto our real estate tax. And then the recession of 2012 hit, and we got the wind knocked out of us for like six years. We really had to struggle to get caught back up. Another was just relying heavily on more like visitors tax, meals tax, because they were more oriented that way, and they had a very low sales tax than COVID gives. They got, they got the wind knocked out of them, too. So it's, making sure we have diverse and reliable revenue streams is important for us to look at as a community. So that's, that's obviously council's purview, but it's helpful for the school board to understand that as well. One of the things I'd also add for the two bodies, because you've got a lot of new people here, is the budget process for us seems, will start to seem backwards. The school board will approve their budget based on the potential funding from the council, which will later approve their budget based on the expectation of state revenue that, as it's been going the last few years, approves their budget last. So if the state underfunds schools, then everything goes back, and I won't say starts all over again, we open the conversation again. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, this might be helpful for us to get into it, is, you know, from the general fund, we're providing about 30% to 32% of the school's operating budget. Somewhere in that range.
We, you're a little higher than that. I think the 33% is about, is the, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the percentage of your operating... We're about 33% of your operating budget.
Correct. Including debt service?
No.
No, just the operating budget?
Yeah.
And then...
Now, for our budget, it's about 48, 52. 52% state, 48% local.
Local, okay. So those are useful and helpful things to understand. And again, if you look at, you know, more than half, it's coming from the state. And everybody's holding their breath on what's happening at state level. It is a little challenging for us as we move forward. There's a lot to, a lot to absorb and take in.
And I would say, when you're talking about those percentages, you know, as a council or a board, what's important to you? Like, that's what it comes down to, right? What's the important thing to you? Sidewalks, kids, police, I get it. And you guys are getting pulled in a million different directions. Important to just think about that. I'm not, that's not a shame.
No, no, it's, I mean, they're all important. It's, but it's about prioritization.
Yeah.
But Danny had a...
Yeah, so one quick follow-on, Castle Bell reminded me. I mentioned disruption at the federal level. It would be remiss if I didn't also say disruption at the state level. In some cases, good. In some cases, bad. It's also something we'll be tracking. We're just going to very closely this session. There is a bill, a proposed bill, that would cap all cities at 4% for their meals tax. We would have to, that was about $2.5 million for us annually, I believe. Because we're at, we're at about a million, about $1 million, $900,000 and change for a penny on, for a percentage point of the meals tax. Half, that's for half a percent. I'm sorry. So if it's $1 million for half a percent...
A half a percent is a million dollars in revenue.
Yeah, so this is a $6 million swing.
So who's putting that forward? Who's putting that bill forward?
I don't remember the patron off the top of my head. I, I think every city in the Commonwealth will fight that tooth and nail because A, it takes away local control, which is obviously always a problem in Virginia. But finding $6 million, that's, when every penny on the property tax is about $500,000, that's 12 cents. I'm doing this math off the, on the fly, so don't laugh. I'm going to mess it up. That's 12 cents on the property tax rate right there. It is now, I'm hopeful that there's not a lot of support for that bill because obviously, you can't just make that kind of change and not expect a significant amount of blowback. But I can tell you, if that were to pass, it would be very bad for a city like us. You know, my opinion is that it's clearly a bill meant to target cities because 80% of our meals tax revenue comes from people outside the city. So when you, when you pass the meals tax, the people paying it, which is not the restaurants, the people paying it because it's a pass-through are the residents. And that, that would create a significant problem for us. So that's one bill that we are tracking very closely. The school construction bill came up in conversation, and to give you an update on that. I was told by the Speaker of the House that that bill is coming back this year. It came, I think, within a whisper of passing last year, but there weren't the votes to override the veto on that. We're going to take another shot at that this year. If that were to recur, it goes to a referendum, meaning it's probably a couple of years. Even if it were to pass referendums, a couple of years out. We did some very rough, back-of-the-napkin math on what 1% of the sales tax would be. And I think we came up with $20 million over the court. And we did a whole percentage over the course of the life at the time. I think it was about $20 million. Mary and I did some math. Again, that's a ballpark.
What's the, is it a five-year cycle?
I don't remember what topic. For the life of it, basically, we could stay in to get about $20 million. I think was the rough math we did just to figure out, is this going to pay for corals? Or is this going to pay for a part of coral? Obviously, if we could cut our burden in half by half with the school construction bill, great. That is something that should greatly be considered. Because like I said, we will have debt dropping off, so we could absorb it. But it's really going to put us at the top, pretty close to our credit limit, so to speak, without some additional help from the outside. So we're going to be pushing for that again this year. We'll see if it gets through on a second try.
Questions? Any of the new folks? It's a lot to absorb.
I guess I'll say, I appreciate the old house analogy. And I believe it's not just an old house, it's a beautiful house. And I think that directly correlates to the quality of life here in the city of Winchester, which I also think needs to be weighed in our conversations with each other and the decisions that we make. We talk about it all the time at school board level. Hanley is unlike any other high school that I've ever known, particularly in this region. We have citizens who use Hanley grounds as a public park. It's essentially a public park. They use the track. They use the turf field. They go enjoy shows at Pathic Client Theater and things like that. This is, these are things that don't always happen in our school districts. And we're happy to provide that. We're happy to say, well, you know, we've toyed around in past years. We're going to put a sign saying you can't use the Hanley bowl, you know, the Hanley field on weekends. Like, no, this, it belongs to the community. The community wants to use it, they should be able to use it. I think, I'll just restate what I said. I think we have to, we have to consider that, you know, Hanley Library is a good example as well. That's an old building. But I'm sure it costs so much money to maintain and to keep it running the way that it runs. But this city wouldn't be what it is without Hanley Library, without Hanley High School. So if we're thinking about renovating corals or complete demolition and building something new, I just hope that these two bodies would come together and make it a priority and make whatever that is going to be the best that it can possibly be for this community. Because coral's no different than Hanley. Go buy it any, any weekend. There are families using the playground equipment. You know, there are people playing basketball out there. I live near there, so I see it.
I'll leave it at that. And I underscore that. I know that when I taught seniors at Hanley, I used to ask them to write for me what it would mean to be a Hanley graduate. And I did that with all my students and to a person. The students, knowing that I was going to be the only one reading what they wrote, were extremely proud of having gone to Hanley. And even the seven teenagers, they can think or not, buying into the program, were all saying that. And I know that building meant quite a bit to them because of the way they took care of it. You know, we have that art in the hallway that they never defaced. At least while I was there, there was graffiti in the bathrooms. There was graffiti in the bathroom. So that's the legacy that they take with them when they leave the city of Winchester, and they remember being cared for. And that was reflected in the buildings that they went, that they went through. And those early formative years really do impact the rest of their lives. So though we talk about physical structures, we're really also sending a really powerful message to our young citizens.
I would just add a comment. You know, I've been on the council now two years, and when I think about corals, for two years, I've heard about corals. I've heard about children, I've heard about flooding, I've heard about this, I've heard about that. And it seemed to me that it got kind of set to the side somewhat. And that's just from my perspective, you guys, you know. That's one thought I have. The second thought I have is, you know, between the school board, city council, and the city, I mean, it is, it is a very unique partnership. It truly is. When you think about, yes, is council concerned about the children? Of course we are, and the educational system, and, and because that's our future. And then on the flip side of that, we're also thinking about the safety. You know, the safety of our community. Like, we need additional farming, we need additional policemen. We need that for the safety of the children and the schools and all of that. So I, when I think about it, it's kind of, it's kind of a rap, if you will, of partnership and the relationship that we have responsibility and accountability for, for both. And we are, we are not separate, we are not separate, we are one, you know. And I, and as I listen to everybody, it, it just, it just resonates to me that we are one in the growth of our city and the protection of our students and our community and the residents. Big responsibility for both, that's why we're one.
I mean, to that end, I've, I've come to, I think I've addressed council and made this statement, and I know I've addressed the school board and made this statement. But, you know, at the end of the day, you spend your money where your heart is. You know, so, and, and to back, you know, to kind of echo Counselor Tagnesi's point a little bit, you know, our heart is in the community, I think, you know, and all of the things that, you know, from education to fire and rescue to sidewalks, to the sewer. You know, I mean, it's, it all has a huge impact on the, on the future of the community. And I think discussions like this are important, because I think it highlights the working relationship that has absolutely got to exist between a functional school board and a functional city council.
Thank you. Well said. So I think, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, and Jason, correct me, I'm very good at a little direction here from, from which way to go with this.
No, no direction. This is for council and school board to just have a dialogue themselves going into the, the budget cycle. Because once we start getting into, you know, brass tacks splitting here, or whatever cliche you want out there, yeah, it'll get a little dicey maybe. So now is a good time for folks just to kind of have a bit of a dialogue.
Yeah, and, well, with that being said, when, when we get into it and, you know, the data does start coming out, I would just ask the school board, you know, to pay particular attention to the things like the borrowing limits and things like that. And, you know, what, what, kind of how we're, how we're obligated to do certain things. I mean, this is definitely important. You know, I was going to go as far as to say, go ahead and get the feasibility study done for corals. That would be my, that's what I would like to see. At a minimum, get the feasibility study started and maybe kind of get that behind us. Because it's going to happen. I mean, I don't think there's any way around it, looking at the, the shape of the building, the age of the building and, and things like that. You know, obviously, second to that is Virginia Avenue. We'll just have to have a separate discussion about putting that on timeline and see how we get there. I, I don't want to put, I don't want to make that, I don't know, I don't, I don't know how we're going to get there, so I don't want to, you know, commit anybody to anything. But as has been said, it's, you know, it's not, it's not going to get cheap. The, the cost is probably not going to go down, so.
Well, I appreciate everything that's been said here. I guess on behalf of the board, before we do get to the tougher conversations where I'm giving Corey the side eye like this, I'll go ahead and extend my hand. President's so good, and very, we appreciate you guys and, and the other counselors for being here with us and having this conversation. I love Winchester, and this is one of the reasons why, one of the, you know, many reasons why I love Winchester, because I review this every year.
Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the city council.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Get it carried. Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
And with that, I will entertain a motion for the school board.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Bursonov, second by Ms. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.